It sounded so good.
Now, do we have to start over? No, okay. Everyone ready?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll start with the vote to hire a new assistant town clerk.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm coming here before you this evening to recommend Andrew San Marco as assistant town clerk for the town of Littleton at a grade 10, step 5, reflecting an annual salary of $69,906.24. This is reflecting the 2025 classification and compensation schedule, permanent full and part-time employees, as well as I'm recommending three weeks vacation. However, per the employee handbook, I have to come before you based on the fact that it is above a step three. So I'm here before you to ask for that blessing.
Does it kick him off any committees?
No.
Okay. Then I'm all for it.
As long as Diane is in favor, I will vote for it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have to say that he's still of great character from a, I mean, he's obviously volunteered an enormous amount of time to the town, some other boards and committees, so I think he's just perfect for that office.
Yeah, he is a very unique individual and will add so much to our department, too. But it is a great pleasure to welcome him, and he is, from all I've heard, from everyone, all the town clerks, he comes very highly recommended. He's been a town clerk for two years. The town clerk of Harvard is very sorry to see him leave, and I'm excited to have him join our town. I mean, he will add so much. I mean, he's just a wonderful individual and a great human being.
Agreed.
All set? Vote to ha- move that the select board vote to hire Andrew San Marco as the assistant town clerk at the town clerk's office at grade 10, step 5.
Second?
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Square man. Okay, moving on to discuss the orchard. So at our last meeting, we talked a lot about potentials for the orchard, and it got bogged down. So we have a little bit more data, I believe, and can start more of a discussion, so I don't know where, how we want to start off. You found, Brian, you have some more information? We have information from Cali Associates about if we were to sell the house on the lot, approximately how much it would, the house itself would be worth?
With the house, it'd be, it's supposed to be $600,000. The lot, the lot, without the house there, the lot would be between 5 and 550.
Okay.
And this is, and I guess we could apologize. It wasn't in the packet, because it was, this was late information that we got right before the meeting.
Literally off the press, right.
So this is for the house lot itself, and how large is the house lot?
It's just over an acre, 1.1, I think is it.
Right.
1.1, 1.17.
So.
Do Kathy here, too, or downstairs, if you have anything? If you, she got it same time we did, so I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that, Kathy, or?
I don't have anything to add right at this moment, and I didn't get to read the whole entire report people telling me.
Me either.
So if I understood correctly, it's, assuming the house is structurally sound?
Correct.
We would sell it as is, and the estimate is 600?
Yes.
And then if it's not, then the estimate is 5 to 550? Is that what I understand?
If, if we were to demolish the house and then sell it, now the septic system, the big thing here was the septic system. It's 24 years old, and part of the narrative expresses that there was a septic company that did review all the records that you have with all the maps and said, he did not feel that why, it appeared to be, it'd be okay.
Yeah.
As is. So without the house, 5 to 550, with the house, 600,000?
Actually, yeah, Jim, if you read it, it's with the teardown house on it, so it's, so it isn't presuming we take any action.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Ryan. Okay.
I had to read it several times, that's why I was double checking. Okay, so if it's structurally sound, 600, if they could do something with the house, I guess 600.
Yes.
If they can't, if they're absolutely going to have to tear it down, then somewhere between 5 and 550.
Yes.
And they're on a one-acre lot with a septic system.
Including 1.17 acres of land.
A seven-bedroom septic system.
A seven-bedroom septic system.
And I believe that was installed by the town back in 2000 when we purchased it?
I don't know who installed it, actually.
Yeah, I think, because, well, 2000 is when it was installed, and I thought that's the same year that, that the town purchased it.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just coincidence.
No, it says the system was, oh, no, that's a different, okay.
It's a lot of money.
So.
Wouldn't take us very far.
No, but if anything, in one regard, it resolves, well, one of your concerns, for sure.
Yeah.
With the property itself, with the house, we still have, no matter what we talked about, the land, the house was kind of always sitting there as, what are we going to do with the house? It's going to cost us a lot of money. It's funny, I mean, I, speaking with some, some people, I also, I didn't know this was happening, I didn't even know we were doing this.
Well, we talked about getting a real estate.
I didn't know, I thought it was the whole property, I didn't know it was the just single, so I didn't realize.
Well, we did, we did a full appraisal of the, of the orchard.
Yes.
When, last year, and so that professional appraisal, not just a, not just a walkthrough, that, that had valuation of everything based on current use and current conditions.
Yeah. It just didn't get specific to the house itself, on the one, on the one-acre lot.
So I, I mean, I think the house is going to be, continued to be a problem for the town to own, right? That's my personal opinion that, you know, if we had to bring that house up to code, we're going to be spending at least a half million dollars on it that we don't necessarily have for any, you know, we'd have to find a source for it. And I think a half million dollars is probably a fairly conservative estimate at 3,600 square feet house, when we know what, I mean, if, if you look at the renovations of Indian Hill and things like that, what they are per square foot, right? Half million dollars is pretty cheap. It's pretty low. So I, I think regardless of what we do with the agricultural sections, the house should be sold, right? That's my personal opinion on it. Whether we went to also sell, what, what we want to do with the other, I, I view this as kind of like, we'll call it four or five parcels. There's the house, there's the orchard behind the house, right? And there's the orchard up the hill, and then the barn, and it's, so I think all of those parcels, we can look at individually and figure out what we would like to do with them individually, or what we think the best strategy is, and approach it as individual parcels rather than one big one that we have. It makes it easier also, I think, to find respondents to RFPs, because they're not swallowing the elephant hole, right? They don't have to commit to doing 50-plus acres and rehab a house and a barn and everything else, they can figure out what they can commit to.
I thought I'd talk to you a little bit about this. Was, was there any discussion with the Prang Indians of that, specifically that area, the house?
They, they, we talked a great deal with them about their plans in general terms for the whole orchard, but they didn't, they didn't get into specifics about what they were going to do in what areas.
But I thought there was, I thought they mentioned that there was interest in the house.
Oh, yeah, they wanted, they wanted the whole thing.
Yeah. They were interested in the house, but to what extent and, under what conditions?
Yeah, I, I mean, looking at the, before I even saw this, it was, we weren't making anything up off the house anyway, we weren't in it, trying to get money off of this whole property in general, but there was a discussion, I know I talked to you about the possibility of giving that house to the Prang Indians and the land behind it. So that quadrant of land, the Neshoba Road, that, that piece of land there, that's kind, that's, that was a discussion that I wanted to have tonight, that I was going to come into before we even talk about, because that takes off a piece of the land, and I don't even know if that's an option, or if that, that group would even consider something like that, because they would have the money potentially to put in whatever they wanted there on that. The house could be renovated, it could become a, whatever, you know, a teaching spot for people to know, but I, in general, that was a thought when I was just trying to figure out, how do we, how can we break this up into a smaller piece that is more manageable? Me thinking the lease side, staying on that side as opposed to trying, pushing the selling side, which I know was a hot discussion last meeting.
I, I mean, I guess I want to push back on the breaking it up, I'm not sure if we're going to lease it, are we doing ourselves any favors by now engaging with four people leasing instead of one person leasing? We've already talked a lot about the fact that we're not equipped, from a resource standpoint, to manage a lease on agricultural land. We don't have personnel, or we don't have money to pay for someone to do it, to manage it, to make sure that the, I mean, this is what happened for the last 20 years. Now we're going to get into trying to manage four separate leases with four different uses. I don't understand how, I don't see that that helps in any way.
Well, one of, I wasn't talking, the 104 plot, I wasn't talking about leasing it, I was talking about.
That's fine.
Don't even get back, right? It would be a good story, you have, Boston Globe would be out here, it'd be a huge deal, but I don't even know what that looks like.
So I don't believe we can split up the APR for sale, right?
Okay.
We would have, if, if, the only way that we can.
Let's see, in circumstance.
Break it up is, right, is, is to lease it, and in order to break it up for sale, we'd have to go back to, go through the whole process of alternate the APR, which I think would be very time-consuming, and would require, you know, the vote of legislature and approval of, you know.
The APR would go with the sale.
Why would it require a legislator vote?
So, I mean, any alter, any alter, I think any alteration requires, it may not, that, it may not need to go all the way to legislature.
I understand we'd have to get MDR's approval, but I don't understand why MDR would have any qualm taking a, you know, 50-acre APR and turning it into a 225.
Because they believe that contiguous farmland is important, and they, they.
It's still contiguous farmland.
Well, but now suddenly it's two different things, like one, I mean.
That would be the same, though, if we leased it.
I think from MDR's point of view, the problem isn't finding pocket farms across the state of Massachusetts for farmers to farm, the problem is finding commercially viable parcels of land that are large enough and contiguous enough for somebody to actually make a going concern of being a commercial farmer. So I think they would have a big problem with it, but I'm speculating.
I would, I, yeah, I think 25 acres is still a fairly large parcel.
Not if you've got 50.
So we, we can debate this, we can find this out, and I can follow up with Brad Mitchell, who knows? From the conversations we had during the working group, I think my impression is that MDR would push back and perhaps not, not approve it. If there's a 50-acre APR that's contiguous, they would not approve splitting it up for sale.
I think it's, I think it's a good discussion to have, I just don't think we can assume that we're going to be able to push that through. I don't think we can come, I don't think we should.
Oh, no, no.
Push forward with a plan that presupposes we're going to get that permission.
But I don't know, there's probably special rules for Native American lands as well, what that looks like, a process of transfer of ownership, so I don't.
Another, again, we would be speculating, right? Like, that's an interesting point that I hadn't considered. There could very well be special dispensation for any kind of usage for, for tribes, I don't know.
But this was more, you know, looking at, the, the house was the issue, we're saying, what can we do here? Well, we have this piece of land, and the house is kind of set, kind of on its own across the street, and that made, that made sense, if that was something that could happen.
I mean, to be clear, I, I'm all in favor of, you know, helping the tribe to reclaim this, if, if, if they're going to be good stewards of the, of the land, and if they can satisfy any of the criteria, whether it remains an APR, if it gets converted to conservation, or tribal land, or, or what, whatever, like, I'm, I'm absolutely in favor, and I'll push for it, but I just want to make sure that we're not committing to something that is going to be legislatively impossible when we.
Sure.
We, we go and talk to people who can actually do it.
Just a point with that, too, and the things we need to probably investigate further is to say, even if you wanted to provide that property to the Prang Indians, you know, master of law would say, okay, there needs to be some sort of competitive process, because there may be other worthwhile parties for whom you may.
Yeah.
Or may not want to give that to, and that also then has to probably be, just as you did with, at the last town meeting, be going back to town meeting and asking for their permission, so.
Yeah.
It's just, it's to your point, Matthew, not presupposing anything, you know, that's certainly a possibility, but, but requiring some further investigation.
And I mean, you know, like, I, again, spoke to some of the, the working group prior to this meeting, and I think that they, I'm not going to speak for all of them, but I think the feeling is, you know, we did our research, they don't have anything new to add, and they still feel that the best path forward is public education and go back and ask again to sell the property as a whole, that that would, that, that would serve the property in the best way, the long, long term, for its best and highest use. And I guess I feel the same way. I'm, I'm willing to entertain other solutions, but I, I think that that would be the right way to go. And I know that we finally made contact with MAPC, sounds like we're going to meet on Friday, to discuss like, public information sessions and, and feedback sessions, so at least we can get that started.
Yeah, I can't, I'm still, I'm, I'm right at where I was. You know, I, I can't get by the fact that we, there's still the question of the town putting money forward to remove the trees, making it more attractive to a leaser, and now the house isn't sitting there causing issues as far as, what are we going to do? How are we going to make this part of the lease? Now we're just talking about the piece of land and how it can be farmed, and so I, I, the, the work group didn't talk about that really.
Well, we, we did, I mean, we tried to lease it several times, and, and we never came up with someone who was interested. Like, I, I agree with you, we could take the trees out, find someone who wants to hay it, you know, like, we could, we could probably get 24 acres in hay next year with no problem. We could sell the house off, that is not protected land, and then, then we would have a smaller problem than we have now.
Or the Christmas tree farm is the other idea.
Okay, but, but I don't think that that necessarily is the best use of that land. It's a, it's 50 acres of prime agricultural land, which could be a working farm, it could be, you know, a vegetable farm, it could be, have livestock on, it could have a lot of fruit trees, and I, you know, it, it seems a shame to me that we would go for the lowest common denominator, because that's the easiest thing for us to do, is just to, to sort of like, it's the least money that we would have to spend, and the least effort that the town would have to make in order to get it back into compliance with the APR. Because that's what I feel like we're doing, if we're saying, oh, let's just see what we need to do to get it, you know, to get it done, to get someone on there.
Well, you're getting it into a viable piece of land that would want, someone would want to lease it.
Yeah.
That's what you're doing.
Yeah.
Because now it's, now it's a blank canvas. So it is, so you're, you know, we, I know that there's a gentleman in the audience that talked about a Christmas tree farm and other possibilities for it, that, so there is, there is, the problem is buying that piece of land and having to remove all the trees and do all of this work, and do the initial pesticide treatments, so everything that comes down doesn't jump all over the woods and the houses around us that nobody wants, so I, I just, I'm, I'm not sold on the, sold, no, intended, you know, on the sale of the property yet. I, I think there's, we haven't done all we could to, to make this piece of land attractive to be leased, so it's kind of like we're just banging our head against the wall, because we're not doing anything to make the property better. We're not. So that's kind of where I'm at with it, but.
I, well, I think you're both right, but we don't, also don't have the funds, I mean, do we, do we have an estimate now for approximately how much it will cost to remove the trees?
So you meant with two people? On site, two contractors on site, and the third one we're talking to, they're going to be giving us estimates, but roughly speaking, in terms of full removal, and remember, it also means the stumps, and that's a whole separate process, roughly, you're talking about $10,000 an acre, roughly speaking.
So minimum of a quarter of a million? If we, if we want to remove 24 acres?
Roughly speaking.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, remember, that's all ends up being prevailing wage and, and what have you, so that's.
That, so that, that 10,000 is, is prevailing wage, that would be the cost.
Right, right, yeah, so there's, there's vendors on the estate contract that do this type of work, so again, I'm waiting for something more official, but roughly speaking, for the purposes of your conversation here, and, you know, is this a small amount of money or a significant amount of money? It's a quarter of a million dollars.
Quarter and a half million dollars to remove.
Yeah.
In order to remove enough to be in compliance, I have to remove all of the trees effectively. I hate to put you on the spot, Kathy, but if we were to actually lease, do we know what the tax, the tax, the real estate tax on the APR land would be approximately at 50 acres?
I don't, I don't have, I have my own field card, so I don't have it, it's not me, unfortunately.
Okay.
I think we were looking at that as, as part of the lease, I don't, you know, because it's a question, too, if, if we build it as, as chapter 61 land as well, and which, in all likelihood, we probably would be doing that, so that even when we were trying to lease and, and work that through, I, I'm going to say at the, I think around, at the chapter 61 rate, I think it was something like around 26, maybe $30,000 a year, and then it was around, it kicked up to a higher level if it wasn't in chapter land.
I thought it was $30,000 with the house and the barn.
I think, that's the full, that's the full, yeah, that's the full.
With those being commercial, and I don't.
Yes, yes.
I don't know what, I don't remember when, when you took those out.
Yes.
And the total land is about, it's a hundred, if you're in chapter 61A, I think it's like 106 an acre, so if you're going to do the math that way.
So $2,500, which, which is, that's, you know, that's more palatable than 30,000, yes.
Well, I mean, this document we just got is an hour and a half old, basically, right, to us, so we're talking potential 500,000 minimum for just the house. That gives us capital to do something with the land, does it not?
It does.
I mean, that's almost a compromise for me, because, you know, I was, obviously, I was coming in with something completely different, but I, I think working hard on the sale of the house gives us time to get that land in shape, and if nothing else, we could get, you know, put the pesticides down on the trees, remove the trees, and move on from there, and we'd still have quite a bit of money left over to, if we need to create some type of a stabilization fund for future issues.
If you're.
We have a barn, of course.
No, no, if you're removing all of the trees, you spent all of that money.
The 500, 600, plus, yeah.
And, and we would lose any control over what happens to that house or that plot, right? Like, a developer could buy it and do anything they want with it that would get past the acre.
Right.
Which, which I think is what, I think the town is really concerned about, more than anything else, we, we were, we heard a lot of concern that it was going to get developed.
Right, but they can only develop the 1.17 acres, they're not going to be able to put much more on it than that existing house.
That's true.
With a settlement, settlement.
Right, there's already a six-bedroom house there, effectively. But if, if, if it's $100 an acre, basically, you're going to spend, you're going to, it's going to take 10 years to recoup your money that you spent, right? You're not going to lease it for more than real estate taxes to any farmer, they're not going to pay more than that. Most of them don't even know that they have to pay that much, they're going to expect to pay less.
Right, and with never the intent of this.
No, I'm just saying that we're going, it's, selling the house and then turning it over to lease, it's not a money-making proposition at all, or it's still, we're hoping not to cost the town money, right?
How are we not, how can we not be costing the town money when we're asking the administrative, when we're adding the administrative costs of being landlords to a, to a farm?
Well, we already are for one, so we're not making.
Well, but right now, we're standing by with nothing.
Come on.
No, 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 I'm not even talking this one, we have another property that we also manage, so, and we're not talking about selling that.
Is it 50 acres?
No, it's seven, but why is it harder to manage, if you're managing one farm, how is it harder to manage two?
I don't know, how did we get to where we are? Because we're such good landlords?
No, we weren't managing them at all, so.
Bad lease.
No, it, it was a lack of oversight from the administration, including the select board.
Right, I don't disagree with any of that.
Yeah.
Right, and I.
So I have full faith that this, this select board and this, you know, the town hall that we have now is up to that, but I have two problems with that. One, we have no guarantee that that's who will be here in six months, in five years, or in 15 years, and two, it's not personally how I want us to be spending our money, and it's not how I want our staff to be spending their time.
You can't see the value in that land.
Of course I can see the value in that land.
Then what are we talking about? I, I.
I, I, in fact, I see the value in that land in not being a hayfield, in being an active farm, and I don't think that the town leasing it to someone is going to get there. The town is going to, if we lease it, we're going to, we're going to inevitably spend the least, little, as little money as possible, we're not going to put in infrastructure, we're going to find someone who just does the minimum necessary to satisfy the APR, and it's never going to be this, you know, a vibrant working farm like it could be.
I think you're, you're short-selling, you know, someone that has a vision to go in there and do something.
So I will, to a certain extent, I agree with Matthew on this, that if we remove the trees and lease it, it's, no one's planting new trees, right? They're not putting the trees in, they're not investing in the property that they don't own. Now, it might be a commercial vegetable farm or something that's annual, but anything, they're not going to put anything long-term on a property that they don't own, right?
I don't know, I'm looking, I'm talking livestock, I'm talking Christmas trees, I'm talking a mix of all these things, I'm talking fruits.
So Christmas trees.
Vegetables, we could talk about a million things in there, and I know the working group put a lot of effort into what can go there, well, if you're, if you were to sell it, I promise you something really cool would go in there. So why, then it can be leased to do the same thing, and we still own it.
Because the economics of leasing are totally different.
But it's the terms of the lease.
No, it's, it's not. If you don't own the property, why are you going to invest millions and millions of dollars in infrastructure and in capital equipment? You're not.
There's.
So let's just go with the Christmas trees, right? It takes six years to do a Christmas tree, roughly, right? So you're going to invest to put Christmas trees in, and you have a 20-year lease, at year 10, 12, you're going to quit planting Christmas trees until someone extends your lease, right? You're not going to plant Christmas trees in year 19, when you don't know that you have a lease longer than that, you're not going to plant them in year 14, right? So the property is going to go downhill after year 14 unless you have extended the lease, because no one's going to invest in it. And if it costs money to put in the Christmas trees, they don't have anything they can use as collateral to borrow against.
What if, it's kind of, it's kind of, it's even more of a compromise, I don't want to say the best of both worlds, but because the advantage of a lease, it's a lower payment for, for the potential farmer, okay? But it gives us no guarantees, to your point, you just said, you know, then they'll stop paying the lease, and then it's back in our, in our hands. What if we sold the property, we held paper? They're doing a, you know, an annual payment, or a monthly payment, or however we want to set it up, they're investing in themselves.
At least to own, sort of.
Not, I wouldn't even call it at least to own, it's, we would just hold the paper with a bank. We own it outright, it's, we bought it for whatever, it doesn't matter what we bought it for, whether it's 2.9 million or, or 100,000, it doesn't matter. We get a, we, we do something like that, and then we can, and depending on how you want to structure, structure the terms, the, whoever he or she or they will be, they'll be building towards their future, and they don't have to come up with this, all this capital right up front. Is that advantageous for, you know, for someone, for, you know, for an agricultural component to go in there, or multiple ones? You know, I don't know, if we kind of think outside the box, and we, and we get creative that way, we recognize the struggles to all this money up front, but it gives. but it gives people the security of, we still have, worst-case scenario, we're still getting, we're still getting paid, and if something goes awry, then we're able to pull that, pull that back. And then we would regroup as a, as a team and think, what are the next steps now if we have to take this, if we have to repossess it? I hate to use the term, but, maybe that's.
I would be in favor of any solution that allows someone to go in there and own it, essentially make it theirs, and invest in it, and make sure that they're doing the best they can on it. If that turns out to be a 50-year lease, or a 99-year lease, or whatever, I would be fine with leasing it under those terms, because the person who goes in there is going to use the land as though they own it. They're going to, like, be committed to it, they're going to work on it until, you know, the day that they stop, and that's really what I feel like is important. Like, I think the issue isn't necessarily around the lease, it's like, the approach to, it's how the person who takes over the property approaches it. If we're giving it to somebody to hay once every year, on a maintenance agreement, they're done after, you know, nine months. And then, there's no continuity, there's no building in the, in the property, and that's, I think, a waste of the, of the land. So, so I guess, I guess I'm saying, I don't, it doesn't have to be sold, but we have to structure whatever deal we do so that the person who takes it over is like 100% in.
Yeah, when I was talking about haying it after removing trees, that was a stopgap, that was a, farmers in Littleton can, whatever, we hay it.
Yeah.
So, we're meeting the requirements, at least while we're trying to get at least to a viable, we're looking at viable candidates, that this is, and we find, one will come in front of us, this looks like a great plan that will work long-term. And we're limiting ourselves by, by the term of the lease, I mean, we said 20-year lease, then.
Well, we can go to town meeting and ask for a longer one.
Sure, and, and depending on.
The authorization we have so far is, from town meeting, is 30 years, so we'd have to ask for more.
But I, I think.
But to Karen's point, we're back to then overseeing the lease.
Overseeing the lease, and, I mean, this is all a very rosy picture of a lease for, of somebody who's going to rent the land and live for as long as we expect them to, and have a succession plan in place that the successor wants to, wants to, wants to be a part of. I mean, this is why farms break up, right? We could lease it to the best person in the world, and 10 years later, circumstances could mean that we've, we're right back where we are, except for now the land's been oriented for one specific use.
But that could be true for sale too, I guess.
I mean, but then it's not our problem.
You get creative with, I mean, we, you talked about yearly update from the farmer, giving us this, the status, you know, a three-slide presentation, if you will, or letting us go out there and walk the property yearly, and this becomes part of our agreement, that, and that we can get, we can get ahead of some of these things when things are, okay, well, there's some things that are going to happen, we can't control things that are going to happen in anyone's life, but, where your concern is, the succession plan on any piece of property, right? So, we put, we have to put stuff in a lease.
I have no concerns about property, the succession plan for property that I do not own.
I do, I do, because now somebody else could, now a whole different mindset comes in and could put whatever there that we have no control over. We have all the control on this land.
That could happen anywhere in town.
But we have all the control of this right now.
We do.
And we, so when you say an owner goes in there and we sell it to them, and then that, generationally, they just peer out, and their kids say, you know, let's just sell it to whoever to get rid of it, we have no control.
Well, except for the APR.
Sure, but that's a lot less control than we have right now.
It's true.
I, I'm. This is, it's tough.
I, I just.
I also.
The financial outlook for this town, and the fiscal conservative nature of this board for the last couple of years, I cannot, I cannot marry that with a plan to become, to reinvest in being landlords to a, to a farm.
And I would say too, like, you know, like Karen said earlier, this board is all, is, we're gung-ho about getting the PowerPoint presentation from the farmer every year, but honestly, that was in Charlie's lease, and it did not work. And I have no faith that five years or 10 years from now, that's going to be enforced, and there's going to be any kind of ownership of the place.
We'd have enough trouble doing the required personnel reviews on time, so, we're contractually obligated to do those.
I mean, you don't believe in lessons learned from the.
Well, sure, for us, yeah, but, but we're not all going to be here in 10 years.
And once a year, isn't, I mean, you know, Charlie was mixing his own pesticides in the corner, in a back corner of the lot, and Charlie was, you know, pumping.
Dumping trash everywhere.
Dumping trash everywhere, and pumping, you know, pumping the water out of the farm.
You're saying things that a landowner would do anyway.
But just hold on here, but, my point being, once a year isn't going to protect us enough from that kind of mismanagement on a day-to-day basis, we're going to have to be there more than once a year. If we decide that we want to hold on to this, I want to make sure that we're doing it under the correct set of assumptions, and we cannot assume that once a year is, is a reasonable amount of oversight, it's going to take a lot more than that.
That's just, that's just a, a simple stroke of a pen, then, that goes into a lease.
Putting it in the lease and following up on it.
I mean, into the budget, too.
It's a writing of a check, and, and a hiring of a person.
All right, so back to the finance, financial part of it. So, the, if we pursue the sale of the house, and that helps us with all our upfront costs to get the property ready to be leased, basically, is what it would be doing. Now we have capital, without going to the town for money, we have capital to spend to get the property into a situation where it can be leased, and a farmer could say, okay, and we go back out. That's really kind of all I'm asking, if we go that route, the, the sale of the house. I was, this is a very surprising document to me, I'm not going to lie, what I expected, I expected that house, you know, a hundred thousand dollars is just run down, there's nothing to it, so when I saw that, I was surprised.
It's not.
That it was a 500 to 600.
It's aesthetic, I mean, look, it's going to be very expensive to rehab, but it's not a tear-down, it's, the house is structurally sound, it has infrastructure, it just, it needs to be gunned and redone on the inside.
Yeah, there are plenty of people that can do that, sure.
Like, I'm not surprised, I actually think, if anything, it might be loved, like, if that house was in good shape, I think it would be closer to a million dollars.
Yeah, I mean, the Realtor.
Given its location.
Realtor, Ms. Colley, Colley Real Estate, you know, talked about the optimism of knowing three or four buyers right now that would do this type of.
And the fact that, that houses that were in poor condition were selling very quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Mr., just to follow up on Gary's point, so just understand what this, so if we were to pursue this, Gary, with your idea, so you basically, you couldn't do anything until town meeting, because you need permission to sell a house at that time. So, that's still, that puts us out into the end of October. Then presumably, whatever proceeds would have to go through, you got another two or three months before closing on that, that puts you probably into the new year. And then we had income coming in that would then presumably be to clear some portion of the property for use that would be, are we saying we would take out 25 acres, roughly speaking, with, if we, if it did hypothetically sell for 500,000?
So, I don't know why we would only do half. I know we're only required by APR to do half, but how are we going to pick which half to do, right? You're going to.
I think it depends on who wants to take it, I think, some people, someone might want all 50.
So, if we're removing the trees on, let's just say we remove the trees from one field, then we're going to say, oh, no, wait, now the disease has spread to the other field, what are we going to do? Right, if you're going to take them out, you have to take them out, right? There's no point in leaving the rest of them to, to disease if.
I mean, unless, unless someone can plant Christmas trees in between them and just let them die naturally, right?
Right, and that was, you know, there's a gentleman in the audience I had a discussion with, who's here, might be able to speak when we allow a little public comment, but that discussion did take place a little bit about keeping the outer line of, you know, two apple tree lines around there, because it is aesthetically pleasing to the eye, and really work the inside, removing the trees, and having, and it got, you know, it caught my mind thinking, there's options here to be had, and some great ideas. But it all comes down to the fact we've got this orchard, we have trees that need to come down, need to remove to even reach that point where someone that could, could say, I want to, yes, I can lease this and make this work. As far as the APR and the state goes, I have to believe that anyone working at the state that has any authority over this would be like, they're making movements to make this work. We're not just sitting there letting it overgrow, like it is now, they're actually making movements. They're selling the house, they're trying to get capital to do this, they're removing the trees, they're pest, you know, got the pesticide problem under control, and now they're going to lease it, and they have different insights. So, I, I think, I'm not, I'm not concerned with that part of it, because I think we can speak our way out of it by action, and we are, there would be action, because we're creating a, a better piece of land for a farmer. There's a lot of pessimism at the table, but I, at the end of the day, it's just a beautiful property that the town would continue to own, and, yes, the concern will always be what happens at the end of that farmer's tenure, if you will, is there a succession plan? There was a discussions that I would think a board, if we, if we created enough, an MOU written into the lease, whatever we have to do to discuss what succession planning looks like as we get further on into the lease, and when the extensions can kick in, and what we're looking for, what the new board has to look for, it can be a checklist, it can, we can really set up this for our future boards not to be able to mess up like passports have on this property. I, and that would be working with their legal team, and I, I'd like to know what happens to any farm that were, there's no succession plan, what happens to it? It gets sold off for houses, right?
Unless it's protected, yeah.
Right, unless it's protected.
Which it is, so it doesn't get sold off.
So, it'd be, it'd be sold off.
To another farmer.
To another farmer, to do whatever they want with that property.
I guess my question is, so, we're talking about getting rid of all the trees, and bringing in somebody to lease the property and do something completely different with it, and if they're gone the next day, we'll find somebody else to do something with it that meets the agricultural preservation restrictions, but the benefit is that we own it.
Yes.
Why?
It's a beautiful property.
It's a beautiful property.
And it will continue to be beautiful if we don't own it.
It'll continue to be beautiful if we don't own it, and if it's 50 acres of hay, because that's what we can get, is that what, I mean, is that better than 50 acres of nurseries?
I, I would believe that future.
Because there was somebody who wanted to build a nursery on that property, who wanted to purchase it to use a nursery. I mean, if we're just talking about aesthetics, I'm not necessarily, I'm not convinced that leasing is the only way to keep it looking pretty.
I have to believe that future boards, who are residents of this town, will always want the best option in that, on that property. If we continue to, to be stewards of the land, we will continue to have this, the, future boards will continue to have this discussion on what, okay, well, I have some great ideas, you know, 20 years from now, 30 years from now.
They'll continue to have that discussion, and they'll continue to not have their eye on it, while something else is falling off, while other things aren't getting funded, while other projects aren't moving forward.
So, let's just imagine we went the Christmas tree route, right, and we leased it for 20 years, and then we decide, no, we don't like Christmas trees anymore, we're going to do something else. Now we're going to have to go and remove all the Christmas trees at the town's expense that are left, right? Stump it, right, now we're committing future boards to spending more money on this, right? Whereas if they owned it and decided they wanted to get out of the Christmas tree business, they had to sell it to someone that was willing to pay those expenses. It's still going to be the same property, whether we own it or not. It's, it's kind of like 12 Robinson Road, right? We bought the thing to protect it, it's protected, we don't have to own it anymore.
I also think there's a, there's, you know, this is going to sound, I think, this is going to sound bad, but I'm going to say it anyway, like, there's some sentimentality here, and I think that honestly, the best use of this property is not the most attractive. Farms have animals that poop everywhere, there's broken-down tractors, there's piles of pallets, there's bags of fertilizer, like, I still think that's a better use than, you know, what's, what's happening now, or beautiful rows of trees that no one's using, because it's like prime agricultural land in the middle of Massachusetts, it should be doing what it's supposed to be doing, growing food, you know, growing animals.
But Matthew, you have control of that, as long as the select board has control of the property.
But, so I think that the town is not equipped to make use of this property in the way that it should be used. We are not equipped to do it, we are not farmers, we're not farm managers, we're not, we're not landlords. And that, I could just keep coming back to that.
So, the one-time capital expense that we spoke of with this, that solves the problem of the initial.
Well, it solves one of the problems, right? Like, it doesn't solve the irrigation problem, it doesn't solve the problem of, like, maintaining the barns, right? It doesn't solve the problem of cleaning up the piles of debris that was left by the previous tenant. It doesn't maintain and reduce the invasives, it doesn't fix the well, it doesn't, you know, there's endless amounts of money that we can spend on that property. It definitely clears the trees and allows more uses of those, of that, that portion of the land that's in agriculture, but it's not the end of the money that we're going to have to spend on this if we want to make it a real farm. It's only the beginning of the money that we're going to have to spend on it.
And, you know, and I know Karen's point said there's a lot of other places to spend our money, but, yes, if we're serious about this, for certain, there needs to be a fund stream that we're saying we're committing to, long-term, saying we're going to put money into a stabilization for the planning and upkeep of unexpected costs to the orchard, whether that means that we go through a span 20 years from now, 30 years from now, of a bridge of a lease, where someone leases out, and now we need to get a new lease, or now we have funds that are there to be able to bridge that gap, to, to what? Get it back to a situation so we don't get in the same issue.
So, when you, when you talk to Shoal and Farms, how did they fund it?
Fundraising.
Yeah, so volunteers and.
They're not getting a penny from, from Lemonster, no funds are coming from the town. Besides the purchase, the initial purchase of the prop, they had to purchase it, right?
Lemonster did.
Lemonster did, and then the stewards, basically the Friends Group took over, and they are the, they are the ones that work it.
But I don't see that in town.
They're worried, they're worried about the, the long-term.
Yeah.
Part of it, and, and there are, Lemonsters probably issue eventually, because right now, it's beautifully operational, the way it's run, the way it's being maintained, and they're creative, you know, reduce the size of the orchard, create the bushes and fruits, and do weddings there, and really go heavy after donors across the country. They, they've developed something that works, but the long-term piece will not work. I can see it, and they can see it, without Lemonster's support somewhere in there, they're going to have to. So, that's why, yes, we would have to have some type of commitment, as stewards of the land, saying, we're going to put money aside for this, for future, you know, for future issues, it could happen, and, let's be honest, what is, what happened? The problem right now is we're trying to bridge between two leases, right? That's where we're at.
Essentially, yeah.
So.
I think the other thing that happened is that the model, the economic model that this was purchased under is no longer viable, and we're trying to find a new economic model. And I think Shoal and Farms is probably going to run into the same thing, like, they're clearly not going to make money selling apples, right? They're, they're, they're surviving on donations and by doing a lot of community.
Barbecue fests, summer fests.
So, they're, they're branching out, but, but you can see that revenue stream isn't going to be enough, and it's not going to be enough for.
Shoal is not under APR, so they have things available to them that we will not have available to us as revenue streams.
Although we could use the barn lot for.
We could, yeah, there's options there, but.
Yeah.
But, you know, like, what, you know, can, can the town afford a half million dollars every year to prop this, to prop it, prop up the farm?
Do you really think that's remotely the cost?
I think that's not, I think that.
Oh, my goodness, where, for what?
For what?
Yeah.
Well, what if the barn needs a major structural repair?
So, you're talking about the initial cost or later on?
No, I'm saying like, you know, even if it's a quarter million dollars a year, every year, to maintain the grounds, to replace trees that need, to replace infrastructure that's broken, like farms, and, I mean, tractors and tillers, and, you know, what are we going to use it for?
But if it was even $50,000 a year, right? I mean, in five years, we have $250,000 in there, in 10 years, we have $500,000, so.
A tractor is going to cost you $100,000 right off the bat.
Oh, yeah.
But what are you, what are we talking about the tractor for?
I mean, we're talking about, just.
Okay, we spent how much on the tractor to mow it?
30,000 a year, just for mowing?
Yeah, we spent 20, yeah, 20 or 30,000 a year just to mow the place right now.
And just to mow the edges, just. And just to mow the edges, just to make it look...
Oh, you're talking with DPW services?
Yeah. And that doesn't, you know, that doesn't, we're not fixing up the sheds that are falling down, or removing invasives and poison ivy from the walls, or doing any of the other long-term maintenance that, we don't even know what we're doing with it. Even if it was in hay, it would need to be maintained.
I guess the one thing that I do know is that when it was operational under the previous tenant, it was beautiful.
Yeah.
It was an orchard, though.
And it was a beautiful orchard, but that's just because it was an orchard. It could have been something else. It was maintained properly when it was up and running, just the evasives on the stone wall, everything was done neatly, it was a wonderful place to visit for a long, long time. So that's the type of thing that I, you would think that you could put back in there on some other level, and if it's a Christmas tree farm, it's a Christmas tree farm. If it's a mixture of things, blueberry farm in the summer, Christmas tree farm in the winter, different parts of it, I don't know, I just, I'm having trouble getting by. I'd like to hear, I guess, from people, just to see what we have. But I can't, I...
I agree all those things are possible, it's just how much are you willing to commit to putting into it every year? I mean, it's going to be at least $100,000.
And it's not just, it's not just like, oh, we've got to fix what's broken, it's, we've got to have the knowledge and the know-how and the expertise to know what needs to get fixed and what's on a maintenance schedule, right? I mean, you know...
At a certain point, we're just going to be subsidizing a farmer.
I mean, I'm, I'm willing, me personally as a taxpayer, that, the small cost to the individual taxpayer to have that piece of property, to me, I value it more than a lot of other things in town that I would value. That's just me personally, so, and I don't know where everybody else stands on it, I'd like, but it was definitely something I'd like to get in front of the town, and I don't think it needs to be, I was just guessing, 50,000 a year, 100,000 a year, 250,000, 500,000. I don't, that's, we're totally spitballing here.
And I think the point, and I think some of the comments, I mean, some of the things that Amy has set up from the working group is, we can't even, we can't come up with a number until someone does the work to figure it out. Anything we say is going to be an estimate.
Yeah.
And, well, it's going to depend on the use. I mean, we could get someone in there to tell you how much it would cost to operate it as a hayfield, right? And we could get someone to tell you how much it would cost to plant, you know, a couple acres of blueberries or whatever, and we know how much it would cost to put in apple trees from the estimate.
It costs nothing for a hayfield. Costs nothing for a hayfield, it's hay twice a year.
Well, no, you still have to put lime in.
That's all, that's all, that's leased out, that individual is responsible for it, they put the fertilizer down.
So, it, so...
You just have to like, you know, clear the invasives and, you know, yeah, mow it.
And then they do it, right.
I mean, if we just reel this back, the initial, our initial cost right away, I think, or the initial thing is the house, that's something that could be acted on probably quicker than anything, because it is, to your point at our last meeting, it is, it is the thing that was just sitting there. We could not figure out, how can we sell this? Oh, in here, you've got this house you've got to deal with.
Yeah, I think the one thing about selling that we haven't discussed that was a major factor in orchard discussions is that if we sell the house, if we separate the farmhouse from the farm, we are really limiting who will be interested in the rest of the land in the farm, because farmers generally need a place to live. And not every farmer needs a place to live, but that means that our pool of interested investors, or leasers, or buyers has gone from here to here, or maybe here, I don't know. But, you know, that's something that, that the Orchard Group talked about, that the folks who know these things talked a lot about, was that we would be putting ourselves at a disadvantage if we separate those two things.
I, yes, we're going to, if we sell the house separately from the rest of the agricultural land, we're going to be limiting ourselves to local farmers, more likely local farmers or someone that already has a place to live.
Who has a place to live and who...
And who doesn't need seasonal help.
And who doesn't need seasonal help, yeah.
Well, they had seasonal help living in the barn before, so...
The cottage down below.
No, the barn.
We're not going back to those days.
I don't know if that was legal.
Yeah.
Are we done beating this and want to open it up, or?
Yeah, I'll see, might have some comment after.
Amy?
Amy Tarlo Lewis at Three Omega Way, and I'm a member of the Orchard Working Group, and originally I was not going to come to this meeting, I was going to let you guys do your thing, but I was listening, and I was like, I can't anymore listen to this. With all due respect, you guys are going in circles. We have had all these conversations, for three years we have done this. We have turned over every wore off, every question that the board select member Gary has asked, we have asked. We did not come to the decision to sell this property easily or quickly, right? In terms of selling the house, do not sell the house. There is a housing crisis in the state, farmers need to be on that property. Who is going to get up at 3:00 in the morning and go into the greenhouse and check the tomatoes when you're in, in March, to make sure that you're not losing your crop? Who's going to drive from like Somerville out to Littleton at 3:00 in the morning? Nobody. A farmer needs to be onsite at a 50-acre farm, you live there, you are working 24/7, all day long, at all hours of the day and the night. You have animals that are, and you're breeding animals, you have to be there with that animal when it goes into labor. You've got a huge flock, and you're going to sell them as meat, you're going to be there to ensure that you have income down the road, right? You need to be onsite. Everyone keeps talking about all these ideas, it doesn't matter what your idea is. A farmer decides what to do with that land, they look at the property, they understand the soil, they understand the rocks, they understand, you know, if it points north, if it points south, what the slope is, what the erosion is. There are so many factors that go into deciding what to plant and where. No one in this room, including myself, is qualified to make those decisions. No one in the public is qualified either. Christmas trees, whatever, you don't know, you don't know. Agriculture is changing. Climate change is here. There is so much new technology coming down the pike about how to manage farms and how to do this work. You, no one in this room understands at all, and they should stop trying to make these decisions. You don't know what you're talking about. You know, farmers understand the business, they understand the markets, they know where the channels of sales are, they understand the commodities market, they know how to price food and products locally. No one here understands that. That's what goes into a farmer's business plan. Why people are trying to make these choices, they don't know. They don't have to put together a farm budget, an operational budget, build those channels of sales, be able to change those prices. You know, when you go to a farmer's market and you're growing organically with regenerative practices, and you've got your $6 tomato, and someone else shows up at the farmer's market with their $2 tomato that's grown with conventional prices, you can't compete because Americans are so price-sensitive, right? Like, those are the kinds of decisions that people need to make. You don't, you don't understand, and in terms of this, people spitballing what the town will have to put aside every year if we go for a lease, again, until you have a farmer in front of you and you know what they're going to do, you don't know. But I'm telling you, like, Boston area cleaners that just took over a 50-acre farm, they have an $8 million budget a year. The majority of that budget is fundraised. About 2 million of that comes in from their food hub sales. Who here in this room has started a nonprofit that has a board, that already has a fundraising machine up that can start raising $6 million? None of you, nobody. The time to have started that nonprofit, or the Friends of the Orchard, was back when we started it. They have missed the boat. You just can't like start a nonprofit and then suddenly raise millions of dollars. You have to slowly, incrementally, get little bits of money, and do little things, and show your impacts, you know, and prove that you can manage money. You can't manage that, it takes decades for a nonprofit to be able to raise that kind of money reliably and independently. And as someone who is in the nonprofit agricultural space, donors are giving less. It is a, nonprofits are very concerned because donors don't have any money to give, and the average-sized donor is a small donor, and the average-sized person, like everybody else in this room, we don't have a lot of extra money to donate, because food prices are so high, because energy prices are so high, because the market is so unstable, right? Like, you guys are trying to make too many decisions about things you know nothing about, you know, and you can't give away the property. I don't care how, you know, like, how worthy somebody is, they have to apply to the RFP, they have to meet the requirements, they have to be able to demonstrate that they have the knowledge, they have the skill, and they have the money. On one hand, you're talking about, I'm so worried about succession planning, whether it's a lease or for a sale, you give the, if someone applies the RFP, and you give it to someone who doesn't have the money, the experience, who's not currently farming, currently running a farm business, right? You're then, you're basically, like, you're worse nightmare, like, you've just like signed yourself up for it. I mean, you, any, if you go to sell the property, someone is going to want to stay, they're going to put their own money, their blood, sweat, and tears in it, they are not going to want to leave. A leasing is like renting an apartment, like, you're there, you're doing your thing, and then you get a better job cross-country, you pick up and leave. All farmers want to own land. Owning farmland is the difference between what makes farms succeed and those who don't. Farmers want to buy land, and I guarantee you, get a leasing, and they find a property that they can buy, they are going to leave. And then someone else is going to come in, and maybe they'll follow that person's farm plan, maybe they won't, but then you're going to be on the hook again for reinvesting and retooling that 50-acre property. These are costs that are totally going to spin out of control. If you lease it, you, and if you start saying no to them, they're going to leave, because those are the tools they need. You know, you're just gonna, you're, you're signing yourself up, you're just, you're not putting money aside, you know, for a rainy day fund, you're starting a business, you're running a farm business, you're, you have to create another department with unknown controllable costs, and if it's a drought, or it's like a too much rain, and you don't get any income, guess who's on the hook for those costs? We are the taxpayer. Farming is so unpredictable. It has such a long time scale. You buy your materials like this November or December, and you start using them in the spring, and you have no idea how much income you're going to get out of it at the end of the day. Farmers have billions of dollars of debt. The suicide rate for farmers today is as high as returning vets, because they're losing farm money, because they can't, the inputs are too expensive. I mean, that's a sign of how hard this is, and we're going to sign ourselves up for it as a town? I don't, I don't understand.
Thank you.
I have a just a comment. So the, all good points by the speaker. More dismal than I've heard, probably, a lot of farmers that I've spoke to speak much more eloquently of the desire to work a farm, and, but, I, as I sit here, I look at if we did nothing but hay it, and I don't ask you, so that's not a very attractive thing. We own the land, we've met the agricultural restriction, and somewhere down the line we can get creative, we can create a walking trail all the way around it, we can have a cross-country skiing trail all the way around it in the winters, we can do a lot of things because we own the property, we can just make it, live outside the box a little bit, don't just think of it as the APR, it's contingent, and, sure, on the agricultural part, but it's also about an enormous amount of conservation land that we have, that we can create trails through this and around this property, which we can't do if we sell the property. So there's a lot of value here, and I do, I understand the struggle that farmers are going through, but I, I've also talked to farmers that believe that something like this could work, we just have to make it more attractive, and that's kind of where I'm at, still.
I will be brief. Sarah Seaver, Chair of Conservation Commission, and also on our NAGA Commission. Couple of things, we made a promise to the town that we were going to have a minimum of one or two meetings, MIPC. It's now been almost two months, so I think we really need to follow through with that promise, and open it up to the town to hear how they feel about that. I too feel strongly the house should not be sold, because I think at the present time we need to pursue those interests. I'd like to offer one clarity for Ryan's comments on pricing. So, Robert, which is the person that I gave you his numbers, who worked for the Orchard in the town before, approximately between $22 and $2500 to remove one and a half to approximately two acres of land, and that is getting it flushed and ground down, so that difference of 2,000 versus 10,000 an acre is not removing the stumps. We, through the process, know that there may be some farmers and entities that do not need to have the stumps removed. We're always looking at hay, but there are other people that express interest, whether it's between the rows or crops for that as well. And the other is, we do have some people that had expressed interest in a long-term lease, I would like to see if we can run parallel and still put out an RFP for a lease, and before we take down trees to see, there might be a negotiation, or maybe someone that is interested in farming between the trees as well. Thank you.
Actually, so that 2,000 an acre, was that prevailing wage for the municipality?
That's who we used before, correct.
Yeah, the price is, I mean, I think the difference, Sarah, I'm not quite sure how you could use the parcel with a bunch of stumps, though, too.
So you're grinding it down, so then that...
No, no, well, no, no, that, you'd be looking at a heavier piece of equipment that probably, what they talked about was pulling, you know, pulling the whole piece, and then you have to process that, so you've got the top of the tree which could be used for some sort of co-gen facility.
I recognize the process, so I know it well, but that's the price that I was given six weeks ago.
Right, but without a stump.
Correct.
The stumps, yeah, so that's why there's a price.
But what we're saying is, we've always had that number, we disclosed it before in committees, because there are potentially other lessees that don't need to have it ground, don't need to have all the stumps removed.
Right, right, but then the question that was asked of me was to get a price to remove the trees.
So I'm just saying, for transparency, stumps is one price, to bring it down to the ground flush is another. So, for my...
And we're speaking with MIPC this week.
Anyone else? Tom?
John McIver, 43 Foster Street, and I just finished leading a sort of a mile sea kayak trip, 50 miles away, so, a little bit late, and I haven't caught up with what you did in the last meeting. So, some of my comments may be disjointed from some of the fine details of like grinding stumps and so on, but I think it's worth mentioning. I had advocated quite strongly, I think at various times, the working group also agreed that you should have some more public input, just not, you know, too minute-timed statement from folks that have meetings. And I'm glad to hear Matt's saying he's going to talk to MIPC. I think that's very helpful, you know, we've often talked about how the Planning Board did very well in their 3A zoning by bringing in a neutral party, having facilitated discussion and seeing what the public wants, you know, it being public land, public funds, people have invested in owning the land there. We also know there is a Native American tribe that has ancestral historical connections there, so I think that's very helpful. So that's the public comments, you have a lot of other things, you have good responses from the RFI that was put out, Karen did a lot to promote that, you have a good feeling for what the interest is out there, but you need to see what the townspeople's interest is. So that's that aspect. Looking at the responses to RFI, it seems like the people interested are some who are farmers who are remote and may need housing, we've heard about that. We've heard that some of the farmers that need to make a profit are in town and may not have to bring in extra equipment, they have their own equipment, and they have their own housing, how they deal with seasonal help, who knows, but it was, certainly it seems like the type of responses we got was people wanting to make a profit, and we know that's a challenge there, but also there are nonprofits that express interest. One of the, well, in two different types of nonprofits, some who do some agriculture, and also some who want to do agriculture, once again, the Native American tribe that has a passion for protecting the land, and as we've often discussed, they were historically involved... as we've often discussed, they were historically involved in the land for a long time. Mass Bay Colony certainly gave them some of their land back, 16 square miles in 1654, including this land. And also in 1714, when the town was created, Mass Bay Colony mandated that 500 acres be set aside for them, including this land. So, it's understandable, they have the passion and interest, but there's also a need to meet certain requirements. The final thing I'd like to mention is some comments about the finances. You know, we're nowhere in a tight financial situation, although it's good we're in a new fiscal year, so maybe we can afford MIPC to come in to—to facilitate something. But just reflecting back on since we acquired this in 1990, and some of us had been involved here when we did acquire that, from the Morrison Trust, or from US Morrison, you know, she sold this to the town at a huge discount. We bought it for a little bit less than $3 million. It was assessed at around $14 million. So, that was $11 million discount. That's a major input. So, we—you know, we're—we're concerned about spending some money on this, and it has been mentioned at the working group, you know, dime hasn't been spent on this in 35 years, except for a little bit mowing, and the conservation presses also paid for that before the town got involved, and some of the neighbors have. So, there's that aspect. When the town acquired the land, they got all the grants they could possibly get for it. The APR is one of those. The self-help, which we— today, we call land grant. So, you maximize the grants you got from the state, and you took on this obligation, and the town did take on this obligation. Town has exhausted the possibility to gain more grants because, by the state reckoning, that you've already committed that land. So, if it had, say, goes to a for-profit group, someone has to make a commercial mon— money out of it, they will not be able to get a grant. If it goes to a nonprofit, they will be able to get grants, and that may be one of the ways of cutting back on the cost of restoring the land. The land needs to be restored. So, if it goes to a nonprofit, like a land trust, or the Massachusetts tribe that may partner with someone else, they can get grants, and—but you also shift some of the obligation to them, and there is an obligation the town has taken on. So, also, and the financial aspect, go—if you go through the files in the Conservation Commission office, you can see that the Morrisons could've sold this land, and through A and I not requiring any special permit, could've been 55 house lots. Maybe it was 57. If they went and got a permit for subdivision, they probably could've gone up to 75. Each and every year that a house is there, you have the obligation for community benefits, and that includes schooling, police, fire. It isn't, you know, that you pay for that to go out to them. You pay for the—the capability of supplying them safety of fire, police, and ambulance, and also plowing the roads. Each and every year that, you would cost you more money than you would get in taxes, and this has been shown the American Farm Trust, and number—number of other places. So, think of that. You know, it could be 55 lots without going through permits, maybe 75, multiplied by 35 years. So, when you say this is gonna cost us money to remove the trees or something, the town has made a huge financial benefit over the last 35 years by avoiding paying for those community services. So, just something to think of. It's a balance. We haven't really paid much for our obligation there. We've gotten money from the state and so on, but there is an obligation, and how we deal with it is a challenge. And I, you know, don't challenge anyone's intent and so on, but it's worthwhile thinking of that. Thank you.
Mark 575 Edsall Road. Excuse my— Larry Ties here. First off, I'd like to say I take great exception to Amy's blanketest statements that no one in this—in this room knows anything about farming. I—I—I declared in the last meeting that I am highly participating in a Christmas tree farm. We plant between 4,000 and 5,000 trees a year. We harvest 800 to 900 a year, both cut your own and—and for sale for—for Boy Scouts or someone else's self. Then, on my second point, you know, I've heard a lot of talk about vegetable farms, blueberries, and all these other things. I only—in that last—in the major report that came out in April, I only saw that was only one place the land was checked for soil conditions. Apple farms have always been doused with arsenic, and that arsenic stays in the land. So, when you propose to grow edible vegetables, I don't think that was ever—ever thought about. So, tho—those points in all, I have to think that they're—and I also wonder, when you're talking about this—is all this money you need to put into—if—if I was to lease an automobile, the—the dealership does not change the oil, it—it does not rotate the tires. It's in—the up to the individual person who's got the car. The same thing would be for the property. If I—if I was leasing that property, I wouldn't expect the town to put a new well in. I would not expect the town to maintain the well. That's my—my responsibility, because I—I wanna put the well where I want, and that's gonna be to my advantage in that property. I may be wrong as far as your jurisdiction here on that, on those things, but I—that's how I look at it. If I was to lease that land, it would be up to me where I want the well, where I'm gonna irrigate, and what—what crops I'm gonna put in, and it's all gonna be about the soil conditions. That's it. That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
And, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mara Keeler, 75 Edsall Road. I—I keep coming back to, why do all the trees have to come out? Why do they all have to be taken out? They're not all dead. They're not all diseased. I mean, it's really expensive to take them all out. It disrupts all the soil, turns everything upside down, and part of what's so great about—what people care so much about the orchard is the beauty of it. And if you flatten that land, it's not—it's no longer the same beautiful place. It just isn't. So, I don't understand why you can't take out the trees. It'll take longer. Take out the trees that are dead, contain—you know, do—do the treatments that you need to do on them, and—and now, there's apples all over those trees. Is there any plan for harvesting what's there? I mean, is that—is that a possibility also? I mean, that would—that would work. I mean, Mark's part about—the point about the arsenic is—is maybe that bodes well for an apple orchard, some version of an apple orchard.
I can answer that. So, we—so, we did—we did speak about the arsenic. I guess the—my understanding is that the arsenic has not been used for several—for many years in the orchard, and it hasn't been sprayed, obviously. An apple orchid hasn't been sprayed for at least five to six years. And we would, of course, get soil tests done. As far as the apples, they are not varieties that are saleable. The trees are not pruned or grown in a way that it's financially viable to harvest from them. They're too tall, they're too bushy, and they don't produce enough fruit. So, you could certainly go and you could—I'm sure you could find, you know, thousands of pounds of apples, but there's no—there's no way for anyone to make any money on them. So, so, people—
For—there's no way to use apples in a different way than just sell them as apples? There's, you know, cider and there's—
We have not found—we have not found one.
Huh.
And, you know, obviously, we—we have tried to lease this to people for three or four years now. I think if people had—if anyone had found a valid use and said, "Oh, there's—you know, there's 50 acres of apple trees that are produ—in production, we can totally go in there and, you know, and find a way to use them," they would've done it. But the only person that we spend up smoking with was a—was a cider maker who was going to replace the trees with his—with a different variety.
Right. A friend of mine's a—an orchardist in—at the Orchard House in Concord, and he walked that land with me, and he said, "These trees aren't dead. They're not even in that bad shape. Most of them actually are pretty good."
No, many—many of them aren't. Many of them aren't yet.
So, why would we kill the aesthetic beauty of it, take all the trees down? You know, and Mark and I were talking about it one day, and he said, "If you—if you try to take all the trees down and make it a hayfield, there's loads of boulders in that field."
Yeah.
And that's—that's—that is prohibitive also.
Because I guess if we don't—if we don't take the trees down, what do we do with it? Like, if—if no one wants to lease it, and no one wants to—
Yeah, I think you hire people—
And no one wants to buy the apples. Like, the town basically is—is operating an orchard at a huge loss every year.
At this point, they're almost organic. I mean, it's been—
Sure, but—
At least five years.
But there's still no one who wants to buy them.
How do we know this? Is this—there's no other—
Well, I guess—I guess we'd only have to sell about $500 worth of apples.
What's that?
We'd only have to sell $500 worth of apples.
Yeah, to keep it viable.
Or $1,000, right, to meet the agricultural requirement.
Yeah, it's $500.
But—but who's gonna pay to harvest that and process it?
Yeah, I will, too. Absolutely. You know, I mean, that's not that hard. There's—nature gives us food, you know? I mean, it's just because it's not commercially viable, they're not the perfect apple, so what? I mean— And I think the beauty of the place is important to the town people because they voted no to sell it for that reason, really, because they're like—they're attached to it. They think it's beautiful. It is beautiful. It would be like taking down the last vineyard in Sonoma County. No one would do that because of the beauty of it, as much as the fact that it's viable for, you know, winemaking and other things. That—that is valuable for our town. It's a beautiful thing that we own, and I just think we can come up with something. I mean, sunflowers, Christmas trees, restore parts of it as orchard. It doesn't all have to be an orchard. That's what works at Cholon Farms, is that the whole thing isn't, you know, orchard anymore. They—they whittled it down to a manageable amount and then, you know, grow other things, but the soil doesn't have to be tested for arsenic, I think, because it—it can be salt in the—in the soil. It can turn to salt, and that's—you know, you don't wanna grow produce with arsenic in it, and apple seeds take this—take the arsenic, and the—the fruit does not, is my understanding. So, anyway, I just don't understand why we have to clearcut the land. Like, what does that get us, really? Nothing.
Well, it gets you to—that you can use it for another use, right? You can't hay it if there's apple trees in middle of your hayfield, right? You can't do a lot of things if the apple trees are—
I guess, but there are some open fields here that we could grow other things and make—get—the $500 or $1,000 a year, whatever—whatever the—the bar is. I mean, there's—there's plenty of open space there to grow other things. There's no reason to take all the trees down to make space for something else. There's plenty of space there.
So, we need to use 24 acres, and there's not 24 acres of open space for hay right now.
You have to use that. Who—what—is that?
That is a requirement for the state, that it—that at least half of the agricultural land is inactive agricultural use.
So, the trees that are there, we harvest those apples. They're not the greatest apples. They go to some sort of use. They feed poor people, hungry people.
Sure.
Make—you know, get a thing going where people make—
It's a question that is—
Apples on cider. I—I don't know. I mean, that's—it's food. It's just sitting there. We—we own all this food.
We could absolutely do that.
And the mindset is that if it's not the perfect apple, and it's not some sort of commercially viable situation, it's not worth anything.
So, I'm not arguing that it has to be perfect. I'm saying—
Yeah, I know you don't.
We need—there's infrastructure.
Yeah.
There's—you have to hire someone to harvest the apples.
Yes.
You have to hire someone to package the apples.
Right.
You have to find someone who's gonna buy the apples.
Right.
How much—as a taxpayer, do you wanna spend?
Well, you have to ask—the—we have to figure it out and ask the taxpayers how much we wanna spend on it, because lots of us wanna spend lots of—you know. I—I—you could raise my taxes for that personally, and I've talked to a lot of people that say, you know, "It's not gonna be that bad." It's not—even the estimate that you guys had online was $2.4 million to rehab the whole thing, plus what it was worth already. I looked that up again, and that was $2.4 million.
But—that was just the capital investment. That's not the ongoing investment.
Yes, I know. I know. But if we—if we do something different with the house, maybe that is the right thing to do. I don't know how I feel about that, but if the house does something else, you give it to the Native Americans, or you sell it and raise money that way, and that's off your plate, then you keep the barns for the farmer, because, you know, you make that into something. I—I don't know. There's ways to do it. I mean, I'm with Gary, that there's gotta be a way to figure it out. It's—it's so—it's a special lovely thing, and I know you guys worked hard in figuring it out and came to the conclusion that you should sell, but people of the town don't wanna sell it. They voted no. So, you know, we're trying to figure out some other way to deal with it, and if there's a—a vision for it, I think money could be raised, and also our tax dollars are for things like—that—that we want in our town. So, anyway, that's—maybe I have anything to say about it, but that's—you know, I just don't get why all the trees have to come down, and it has to be flattened and start over. Like, that's just not how nature is. It just doesn't work that way. So, thank you.
Rob Brown, 25 Juniper Road. First, I'd like to hear if Sarah's safety list and numerous discussions that have been ongoing within the working group and even the select board, have you gotten that quote? Have you taken action? I don't—I—I've tried to attend all your meetings. I'm not aware that you've received the quote and what actions—
I can—I can answer that, yeah. So, so, we're waiting—I'd like to talk to the contractor today. He's been on vacation. He's gonna give us something on Wednesday for the repairs. We've already done some—the—a lot of the other basic stuff, which was just to shore up other things, so, yeah, that's coming along, Rob.
Okay, but I thought I heard you were meeting the next week of your last meeting that was about two weeks ago. So, was that meeting not held, or did I misunderstand? And you can say I misunderstood.
Yeah, I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay. So, I guess I'll say that this process has taken a long, long time. Sarah mentioned, and Don mentioned, the MIPC meetings. I've gone back and watched all the LCTV for every meeting that's available online. It's shocking what I didn't know. It's shocking to me, having now watched all those, as to what I—all due respect, what I suspect you don't know. Not all of you are saying some statements that I think conflict with what I would argue. If you've got a working group that you compliment and applaud as being effective subject matter experts, to then diss them and not follow their direction or make better inquiries on essentially facts, what—I see before me makes me dizzy. I see the two members currently on the working group, granted Karen, former member, having to argue basically for what I view as—somebody should stipulate as, "I'll accept that as being factual," not spitballing, not something, whatever you wanna call it, but, okay, hard work has been put in. We've had Massachusetts consultants come in and give us feedback. We should abide by that feedback, or you folks who are, I would think, are managing that working group should've been involved far more than apparently you have been with regard to what's going on in those meetings, because I think it's a waste of the public's time to hear in this sort of decision-making process for the select board start—to start to roll back to months-ago meetings that I feel I'm better informed. I know I'm not. The people in the back row, they are. Some of you are, but some of you aren't. And another aspect of being dizzy, I wait for these MIPC meetings. Matt, you—I—you know, I could give you, if I took out my notes of the meetings, you were talking, you know, in response to Sarah, "I hope that we'll get them faster than four to six." It's not your fault the MIPC hasn't responded, but she was calling you out about a month ago with regard to where are the meetings that we promised the public? And you're now finally—which is probably no fault of your own, but for goodness sakes, I left the town meeting, and some of you know. Diane Corry was here earlier. I've got the petition. I've been waiting. I've been waiting for the cost estimates, and now you fi—we finally get a cost estimate, and now we're going to—again, I've heard all of Sarah's—that's not new information to you folks about the $2,000,000 with regard to clearing the stumps. That's been known for months, and if—and if you aren't satisfied, then you folks who are supervising that worker group should be confronting that working group or chasing it down and insisting on, "We need to get better information." To—to stall the public, me being one member of the public, yeah, this isn't—this isn't serving the public well. So, reference has been made at different times, specifically this meeting. I know I need to direct my comments to you, you know, Mark. With regard to, are we spitballing? We'll do best—you know, the select boards in the future will do best with regard to the interests of the property. The April 10th meeting of the working group, some of you were there, was a confrontational public to the select board, accusations made with regard to mismanagement by the town with regard to the property. with regard to the property. There was contentious moments between working group members with regard to the accusations that were stated and stated during that meeting very strongly by the working group's chair at the time, was that past select boards have lost public trust with regard to the actions that they've taken and how they've ignored previous working groups, not the one that's currently assembled, but prior to the one that's currently assembled. I now hear in the last two meetings, things that make me wonder, wow, where have I heard that before? It sure sounds like the April 10th meeting. This concept of selling the house to separate it from the, the APR premises? Wow, where has that come from? And if you had those ideas, where have you been? Because you should have been talking about that with the working group months and months and months ago, not bringing it after you didn't educate the public. Again, not all your responsibility, but partially your responsibility. If you're bringing a warrant, you should know that you've got an informed public. If you're not informing the public, maybe you shouldn't be bringing a warrant for a town vote as significant as this. So, thank you for listening. Thank you for doing all the stuff that you do. Your tasks are impossible and that's the part that really, I attempt to lessen my voice and my tone, but right now, I'm just so frustrated and confused with regard to where we find ourselves two months after a town vote that was a measly three votes shy of two thirds. So we're going to ignore the majority, the significant majority. We're going to ignore that we've got multiple experiences, recent experience of an uninformed public that then you work because you can't imagine the pub, an informed public would make that decision. So you inform the public with MAPC meetings. Does this sound familiar? And then the vote turns and then you get the action that you think is the smart, intelligent action and so then we can go forward. So here we are again. The select board has no money in the current year to spend to do the things that need to be done. You've had a farmer will from the working group say, get me a cost per acre, do a minimal amount of acres, get a lease concept, or I've heard the concept of a maintenance agreement. Get a maintenance agreement. Start to find out. Contact, the working group contacted the RFI respondents. Is anybody interested in three acres, five acres? Yes, you've got somebody interested in as many acres as they can get with regard to Christmas tree farm, or Christmas tree, cut your own. I don't know if that's the best use. I'm not an expert. I'm not, I'm just somebody who's trying to understand what this town is doing. Personally, this is the course of action that I think you should do. I think you should, enough of the waiting for the MAPC meeting, based on what I'm experiencing and watching as I caught up with the LCTV videos, I think this group should have another meeting with the working group. I think you should allow the working group basically to do not just the presentation that they made to the public, but I think all five members of the select board should agree on a date and you should get with the working group. And you should basically have a detail, you guys submit the topics you'd like to discuss or better yet, let the public submit some topics that they would like the working group and the select board to hear and then you can debate the facts or you can agree to disagree. And we can then see what your positions are on certain, certain matters. After that, then I think you could start to hold a public hearing with regard to, allow the public to really have input to you with regard to what their concerns are. In some ways, I don't feel like I should be one of the lone voices. Should I pack the room to make all the points? You know, I don't know. But the public at different times has spoken to you. There's concerns with regard to the diseased trees. The disease doesn't stay in the diseased tree. It moves on to the next healthy tree. How many months ago did many of you hear that the abutting properties are having damage done to their properties as a result of the town's mismanagement with regard to the fire blight? I mean, I'm not making this up. This is happening and so you're not dealing with it on a timely basis. At times, there's been discussion of responsible actions like the safety list, but here we are, months later, and it's still not done. I think I'm fed up with regard to hearing how the working group members are basically the one that free of charge has been taking on the responsibilities maintaining the property. And poor Steve Yonley, as I hear months and months and months, you talk about the costs of ongoing responsibilities. It sounds to me like he's on a quick list with regard to, hey, go do this, hey, go do that. The guy's down staff. I know of other projects that aren't getting addressed and now I think I know where he might be going to, to address some other things because he's not addressing other matters that I think are of equal concern. I think you need those public hearings and I don't think you need to wait for MAPC. I think you could hear from the public tomorrow. No, you can't. You need the, you know, several days to announce a public hearing. But I think you should do that because I think otherwise, you're just setting ourselves up for some round of public education that's really not going to get to what some of the intelligent members of the working group could really present you with regard to very specifics. And you should have to deal with those specifics, valuing three years' worth of work to bring to your attention and hold you accountable for being informed, informed like the public wasn't. I'll stop there, but I, I, enough of the waiting. Like, this shouldn't be, I, I now look back at the two-month mark after the, the town meeting as, what a fool you are, Rob Brown. You're an idiot. You should have forced action on this. You should have forced, because if I had done that, we'd be in a different place right now from an education of the public standpoint and we would have a lot more urgency with regard to getting on with the safeguarding of the property. We'd be a lot closer, I think, to get a farming of the APR premises. And again, apologize for the tone, but man, I'm putting in a lot of hours and it's nothing in comparison to the hours that you folks put in on many, many important initiatives and it's nothing in comparison to what the working group has done and it's a shame. Thank you.
So, just a couple rebuttal points on this. We have supported the working group every step of the way on this. We have never, this board has never done anything against the working group. The question right now is whether to go against the public that voted at town meeting or, or how to change it to get the public on board, right? I'm not saying that the working group did yeoman's effort to get to where they were. We should have had, I wish we had more time as a working group and a board to better educate the public before town meeting. We did not have the time. The article came too late to the select board to do a lot of that lifting, right? But we have supported the working group and on everything they've asked for. The question right now that the select board is dealing with is, do we want to continue along the quest that the working group was on and go back and sell the property? Or do we listen to everyone at town meeting that voted this down, right? You, you can't say they'll listen to one group and ignore the other. So we have to figure out, we're all struggling with that reconciliation up here now on what's best to do because it's not fair to the public to just keep coming back with all the same arguments again until you get the vote you want, right? It's just, it's not the right thing to do, right? So, we can come back to town meeting and propose selling it with new information and new facts and things like that, but we can't come back and say, this is the exact same article we had before, or we could, but we shouldn't come back with the exact same thing and say, please vote for it this time because we're going to stack the audience with who we want, right? That's just, that's just bad neighborly. You shouldn't do that as your neighbors, right? You shouldn't do that. So, we're trying to move this along. Government works outrageously slow and I share your frustration on how hard it is to get these things done, but none of us are stonewalling up here trying to make this take longer. This, I mean, this orchard is an enormous time suck for the select board and I will be so happy with whatever solution that we come up with for it, just to not have to talk about it, well, tonight for two hours. And at every, one of our select board meetings, we spend at least half an hour on the orchard and it would be so nice to be able to focus on something else once in a while. So, that, I think, was one of the points that Karen was trying to make earlier is, we have to reach some solution, right? And everyone up here, I think, is just frustrated that it didn't pass before and now we're trying to figure out what the best solution is that we could get through. So, and whatever we do has to go through town meeting. So that, we're all also bound by that. And doing an earlier town meeting like you suggested doesn't necessarily buy us more time because we'd have to be prepared to educate the public in that period of time. So, there's a lot of moving pieces and I share your frustration on all of these, but there's only, yeah.
So I, I hear and I believe you passionately stand by everything you've said, 100%. Don't have to convince me, Mark. I see you at numerous meetings beyond this and others that you're the, you know, ex officio member of other. I'm there. I will argue though, that, and I've already said it to you, read the warrant. There's no contextual information to inform the public. I respect that you just said, it came too late, the board didn't have time. That was two months ago. It was a three vote. There's been numerous opportunities that we could have taken to have accumulation. There's so many nuanced challenges, some of which you've discussed. How much will it cost on an annual basis to support this orchard if you continue to own it? Some of the information I heard discussed earlier, you have to basically, the, the public has to listen to you bandy about, I'm not even aware that all members were informed that you were already giving DPW spend and mo, you know, that challenge for the tune of, you know, 25, 30 grand a year. You know, that's just one piddly little piece of what you need with regard to the past history. Reference was made earlier tonight.
So that, I mean, excuse me for interrupting, but that just goes to prove our point, right? But there's a lot of factors, there's a lot of variables that we're trying to get the facts together for.
You're not.
Excuse me. We can't, we can't go public with the facts if we don't have them. So, we're trying to do a couple of things at once. We're trying to get MAPC lined up so that we can have the third-party neutral forums that we promised to the town. We're trying to get the facts together so that when we do make our presentation, we've got more than what we had at the last town meeting. And we're trying to come to an agreement amongst ourselves as to what the next, you know, how, whether we want to go to sale or to lease depending on, but, you know, you yourself in this, in this presentation, you said a couple of different things. You said, well, you haven't gotten the MAPC things, but you don't need the MAPC things now. And you said, and, you know, we're supposed to go to lease, we're supposed, you know, go ahead and go and lease it, you know, just get it done, but also hold the public meetings. But if we're holding the public meetings and we've already leased the land, what's the point of the public meetings?
Okay.
I mean, I, I understand the frustration, believe you, me, we all share it.
Yeah.
But I would also just, yeah, it's really easy to throw stones. It's really easy to look at somebody else and say, how did this not get done? We can't make people call us back. We can't, we can't tell our employees or our families that we're not going to take summer vacations. You know, you're, you're dealing with an imperfect machine and everyone's doing their best.
So, I'm trying to walk a fine line and I recognize that my statements, because at times I'm trying to be brief, even though you're being patient, allowing me considerable You have enough subject matter experts that it shouldn't take, you could advance substantially your information by just listening and obtaining the information from your subject manner, matter experts in the working group to fill out. Ask them. They can give you a better informed list of what costs should be expected to be, you know, needed on an annual basis. Will it be the exactness? It won't. But here's my problem in response to what I've heard you say, because I've listened to this. As soon as you get a cost, we've been waiting for this cost and then some of your members diss the fact and now we're spitballing. So I'm in the public waiting for you to gather the information, waiting for two months. It finally surfaces and now we're discarding it as spitballing. So, I could answer each of your points, but my point is, it's been two months, you've not heard from the public. I think that's been too long. Yes, you're going to meet on Friday with regard to MAPC. I think you could meet with the working group and hold a public meeting, followed by a public hearing, followed by you guys having a public session with regard to the debate that you're having to deal with the information that you've had. Keep on evolving, upping your game with regard to what you, you folks can agree on as common, common concepts of advancing. Concepts of, should we sell the house and cut the throat of future farming other than nearby farmers? If you think that's the good idea after you're informed, then I'll respect your decision. I might disagree it, I might fight it to the death, but at least I know you're informed. If you want to envision, you know, this concept of a GoFundMe or a, we're going to get massive donations from who knows where in order to do the future, then let's see some evidence of that. And I know it takes time.
The select board cannot do that.
Okay.
We cannot do fundraising.
Okay, but.
So, if, if you want to go off and start a fundraising group or anyone in the audience wants to do that, we won't stop you, but we are legally not allowed. And so far, no group has stepped up to do that. They talk about it. There's been a lot of talk about it, but no one stepped up to do that.
Mark, here's my response to that. I'm just picking up on that idea because it was thrown up by your members during the last meeting where you said, so why don't we, so why doesn't somebody, I'll change it to me, why doesn't somebody? I'm just trying to say how, I hear about the concept.
Why hasn't somebody, but yes.
Okay, so, so I agree with the, the updated edit, but my point is, as the public, we come and we hear concepts of, we should hire a facilities director. Is it in the budget? No. You know, we should do this. We should have a, you know, somebody should do a GoFundMe. We should stop the dialogue that isn't based on some common set of, here's what we as a select board believe as we go forward. Here's how we validate it with subject matter experts. Name your experts, name your quotes, name your real estate person, name your working group. I've taken too much of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to be brief this time and then I gotta go pick up a kid. So, I'm not leaving because I'm mad, I'm leaving because I'm a mom. So first of all, I did want to apologize to the gentleman in the room. I didn't realize we did have a Christmas tree farmer growing, so I do apologize for that. And to Mr. McIver, who keeps pointing about, about the praying Indians, again, no one is stopping anyone from applying for an RFP, whether it's a lease or if it's a sale. And I'm getting very frustrated that I hear a lot of people really advocating for them and I'm very concerned that I don't see them here. You know, we, everyone really supports them, but they're the, if, if the lease or the sale were to go to them, I need to know that these are people who are going to be able to advocate and come out into the public and I, and I'm not seeing that. We've had three years' worth of meetings and the people who applied to the RFI showed up to those meetings multiple times. They showed up online and on Zoom and asked questions multiple times. They have emailed us multiple times. Those are people who I believe can go out and build a farming business. When everyone else has to speak for them, that makes me very nervous. So please, someone have them come to our meetings and advocate and prove to us and develop a relationship with us. That's my other point. And then, this idea that we should keep it as an orchard because it's beautiful, I don't understand you, who here would run a business that would cost you multiple millions of dollars for $500 of income? That's not a viable business. You wouldn't run park and rec like that. Why would we, why would we do that? You, we are not here to maintain a small groups of people, their, their memories. Like, oh, I drive by and it's beautiful. That's not what the APR is about. It's about producing food to feed people. Why are you shooting for the minimum? There's a food crisis. food to feed people. Why are you shooting for the minimum? There's a food crisis. There's a hunger crisis. There's a climate crisis. We should be growing more of our own food locally and regionally. And that, growing $500 worth of food is just, is quite frankly a waste. You know, we're, farms are beautiful. It doesn't matter if it's an orchard or if it's cows or it's sheep or it's diversified. When I drive down 119, those two farms on the right side are beautiful. When I drive by into Carla and go to Clark Farm, it's beautiful. When I drive through Concord where I grew up, the, all those farms are beautiful and they're all doing something different. There's not one version of a beautiful farm. I, I think that's very limited and I think it's just serving some people's, like, "I took my kids there and it was beautiful and it brings back my memories." We're not funding people's memories. That's, that's not what we do. You know, and then there was a comment about the arsenic. So it is a heavy metal. None of the arsenic has been sprayed, it's been sprayed for multiple years. It is eligible to meet the organic certification to start that process. And there's also a very deep and very wide and broad arsenic vein that's running underneath that property. It will always be arsenic there. And so that's really just not a concern with growing the vegetables. And I know there was a comment that for-profit farms cannot apply to grants. That's actually incorrect. There's USDA grants, which provide multimillion dollar grants. The Department of Agriculture also provides grants to nonprofits and farm businesses. And if anyone's watching the agricultural market like I do, there are so many green funders out there. There, there are major businesses who are investing in transitioning land into more regenerative organic practices and restoring soil. Just think about the carbon market. It's just, yeah, I don't know if I really believe in carbon, carbon credits because you can buy and sell, they'll live all of the live long day, but if it doesn't actually improve the climate, it doesn't really matter. But yeah, there's other way, there's plenty of for-profit farms who are getting grants. So I'm actually talking to a dairy farm about running a USDA grant for them. So it's possible. And I gotta go. So see you later.
Dawn McIver, 43 Foster Street. Just a couple of comments. I've done land use planning sometimes professionally, sometimes on boards, state boards for like 45 years. This is a complex situation. And, you know, you guys aren't a fault, but it's a challenge. And some of it is figuring out priorities, what's most important and what seems to meet the need. And you have a short time span for the next town meeting. So, you know, it's a challenge. You know, there's no question about it. The one thing, once again, I think makes a big difference is having the public input. That's one of the things that's missing. And having it done by a neutral party facilitated makes a lot of sense. And if MAPC isn't capable of doing it, it doesn't have that availability. And they're good. I forget his last name, but Dave's the one we, who's head of the department. On the planning board, we've used him a lot. And he has a lot of good experience. He's worked for various land trusts. He's done controversial things and he, he does it well. If he isn't available, another person that has been offered, the resume has been floated in the working group as part of the LandVest proposal for helping out doing RFP, and they did not win it, but the individual himself would be very good. And that's Keith Ross. He is a selectman. He works for LandVest. He could do it individually. He created a land trust on his own. That's, he's considered very good in what he does, has a master's in environmental law, not a lawyer. He, Deputy Director of Newland Forestry Foundation, which now is depending on how you look at either third or sixth largest land trust in the U.S. They have huge areas. He has a lot of experience. He's well regarded. And throughout the state land trust-
We're looking into, we're, we'll know more early next week on MAPC's ability or not. And if we don't know that, we'll reach out and get contacts from you.
Right. And even working with both of them, they're very good at facilitating. And I, I go to-
We'll know more Friday.
Yeah. And that's what you should do. Also, you should talk to some other regional land trusts that are very successful, such as Sudbury Valley Trustees. And for the people large, it's more than Sudbury. It's the whole watershed.
I agree. We need to do a better job of public input and we're, or public outreach and we're working on that. And there should be, stay tuned. I hope to have updates on Monday.
But also privately, you should talk about what's possible. What, what are the possibilities? Cause they've done a fantastic job of various things.
Okay.
And they don't have the money to buy it. They're not going to do it because they're going to use money for something else. But we did bring them in for the Smith property and look what all the good things they've done there. And they do have the contacts, the knowledge. They have reached out. So once again, for having a public session is a good way to educate people. It's a way of building up consensus. You need some sort of consensus as you go to the next town meeting.
Yep.
That is the bare, best path for you to get everyone together and have people feel that you truly have listened and you've weighed things. And, you know, it's based upon experience. As far as the working group, the working group has done quite well figuring out the agricultural aspect. What is missing is experience dealing with public lands. I mean, you do have someone there from the Concom and she has some experience, but you need a larger group there that has that experience. You've talked about expanding the working group by a couple of people. I think there is a resignation that had happened from the original working group. We've talked about people, sort of new blood that might be good coming in. But if you expand it, you also can get some of the expertise. Cause once again, what a committee runs things, that, as you've shared with me, town council says, "Ah, let people talk for two minutes, be noncommittal." That's great. And you have a really controversial hearing. And I used to actually be on the executive board for Mass Association Health Board for six years, Mass Association Conservation Commission, 19 years. And we would instruct our people, "If you have something controversial, that's the way to deal with it. If you want to solve a problem, that is not the way to deal with it." You cannot get good input that way through having a public process, as we've talked about, similar to what the planning board did when they regrouped and realized their original proposal for 3A zoning did work. They did allow people to talk and ideas and to, to expand upon. That's the way of solving solutions. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, just one last thing to come to, sum up some of the things that we, we talked about. You know, I would, I'm probably, I, we have to come to the fact that we might as a group never come to consensus or asking townspeople to come to consensus, recognize the fact that this board might not come to a consensus. So that, that's just a, that's, that's why there's five independent people up here. This, secondly, we're coming off a two-thirds vote and let's be honest, two-thirds vote have decided many things in town, many things in our government federally, all the way down to state level. So it is what it is. We don't have the luxury, I don't believe as a board, when, when a two-third vote happens, you know, May 7th, two months ago, to just all of a sudden not acknowledge that it, it didn't happen. So whether 66% of the people, not quite 66% of the people voted for something, we're, we're left with, we have to act on the minority in that case. And that's what we have to work to. Okay, the public spoke because come November, town meetings usually are smaller. The people that we're talking about educating are the 10 of you, maybe a few more that come to these meetings all the time. The ones that show up at town meeting, and I know because I have a lot of friends and people in my neighborhood, just go to town meetings. They just go because that's like the thing to do. They don't, they're, so it's, it's like any election, any anything. There's not a whole lot of educated people that are going to come on a subject. So that's just a fact. So we're after a two-thirds number for something. It's very hard to achieve. And I'm worried, and I mentioned it in my last meeting, I'm worried that we go into, if we were to put something like this forward again with all the information and holding public sessions, we hit, we don't hit the two-thirds again. And maybe the room gets packed, say with people that, you know, have been talking a little bit more like me, that would just value the land because it's land more than the business side of it. So I can't, we, we have to look at it a little bit differently, but I, I'm cognizant of the fact that we might not have a 5-0 vote for something and that, we're just going to have to live with that. And I'll, and I'll live with it. The other thing is the Orchard Working Group, we, we do talk a lot about them, but they are like any other appointed committee that we have dozens of in town, in, in our elected committee as well, that we lose a lot of things that we want to happen. Now, the Orchard Working Group worked hard. They, they came up with this consensus on here's what they felt should happen. Town said no. I know it's upsetting because I've sat on many boards where we had consensus and we voted something and it didn't happen. And it's demoralizing, so to speak, because we're the experts. We sat in all these meetings. But the fact of the matter is, you kind of just have to swallow the pill, reset and try to figure out, okay, what's another way forward. So I, I get the frustration, but I also don't think we're behind. This is land, first of all. It's not going anywhere. Let's just talk about that. The biggest crime here is the house, but we're going to board it up the best we can. So it's land and there is a cost to maintaining it. We've talked about it. Nowhere near the cost that it would take to do some of the bigger things we're talking about. But I just, I just think that we really are not that far into it. A vote happened May 7th. Since May 7th, we, we had, how many things did we have? We had a closeout of a fiscal year. We had employee evaluations. Like you said, this is vacation month for not just select board members, but employees of the town. It was an election cycle. We have new goals along with everything else going on in town, right? So I don't think we're behind. And I think you guys are doing a great job as well as trying to set up these meetings for us. These are the full-time employees that are trying to make a lot of this stuff happen and make sense of the chaos that we're providing. But I really think for town meeting and when does a warrant close?
I don't know.
It's probably, it's not September 15th or something. So we're not behind. We have, we're going to come to if not a full consensus, there will be a majority vote eventually. We're going to have to make some decisions on pieces of this that we will put forward. And we have until September to, to get a warrant article together, whatever that looks like for the town, whether it's for funding for something, whether it's, whatever, whatever it is. But I do like, there were a lot of good ideas, I think, expressed here tonight. And I, I, there's a lot of passion behind a lot of these, this piece of property especially and how we should move forward and the money. And, but I also sensed a lot of frustration from, from a lot of people. And that's, that's unfortunate, but this is kind of the reality of, and it shows that people are really, really care about what, what we're talking about. I, I don't know. I just, my, my personal thing, I try not to get in the way, but I just know that I would never, as a resident, say, "Let's sell off 50 acres of conservation land." I don't care who it is.
Agricultural.
I know. Conservation or agriculture. To me, I value the land the same way. That's all. And I'm just, it's just, I, I like the town having control of the open space. I don't care what we want to call it. That's all. That's, that's where I came from. And I know that might not be fiscally genius, but I'm willing, I'm willing to-
Yeah. I mean, you made a comment about the business decision. I don't care about the money. I want the land to be used, as Amy said, for, for growing, growing food and feeding people and, you know, and using it the way it should be used.
I know you do.
Like that, like whether or not we make money on it is completely immaterial to me. So to me, it's not a question of money versus some altruistic goal. It's literally an altruistic goal of, "Let's use this land the way it's supposed to be used."
And I also agree with you that we need to, you know, after September, we need to start figuring out or before September, we need to have Plan A and Plan B so that if this does fail again, whatever it is in September, that we're not waiting until May before we can do something again. Right? That we have some plan for if it, you know, maybe we have multiple warrant articles to do different thing, accomplish different things, which sounds awful when I say it, but we need to have a plan so that if it fails, we aren't stuck.
I will-
Whatever it is.
I do agree that the, certainly, I'm not trying to belittle the amount of people that show up at the meetings and that are educated on any subject we talk about. But we do need to get as many public meetings and hearings out there that we can, just so that if, if the board's consensus is to do something, then it's our job to educate the best we can. And that now we know a way forward.
Anyone else? Are we done?
When do we, when do we, I guess we, this probably needs to stay on our agenda for the, for the next two months.
So we'll, we'll go, we'll go forward with MAPC. You know, it could be that we do want to look for another lease option prior to September because we should do something. I am opposed to splitting the house off, at least for the time being, until we can sort out the, what we eventually are going to do with the, with the entire land.
So I'll just throw it out there. You mentioned leases. Is it worth putting out an RFP for a lease with the property as is, like we did before with Storm along? You know, just throw one out there now and say, "Who bites?"
Well, we, we could go back to the respondents to the RFI and tailor-
No, not, well, we can, okay. We could tailor an RFP to them.
Or not tailor it, but-
Tailor it to, to respondents, not a respondent, but-
The lease respondents or those who-
Take, take the old RFP and strip it down substantially to make it simpler. Is it worth doing that between now and, is it worth spending a month to do that?
Probably. I mean, there, there were people who responded who said they would be interested in pursuing a lease.
And, and leasing the property as is? Cause we don't have, we can't do anything except as is.
I don't think, I don't think anyone said as is.
Because we can't do anything else right now. We have no budget to do anything other than as is. So if we want to do a lease now, it has to be as is.
Well, we could issue an RFP and, and discuss what the terms are and go to town meeting to deter, to determine, "Okay, well, this person will do it if we remove the trees. This person will do it if we remove the trees and we have the house, et cetera."
So that would be, we're putting out an RFP and they're putting conditions on us that we can't sign the RFP until after town meeting.
I mean, that's where we were before. So, you know, I don't see any way out of that. We, we could, you're right. We could go back with another RFP as is, strip it down and see what happens. I'm not optimistic that someone's going to respond, but we could try. I mean, we've done it three times.
And what do you two feel about that?
What's the, along the process and the cost?
Uh, to do that? Well, I mean, it's, it's really just dusting off the old thing and just, and just-
Stripping it down.
Right.
When we say strip it down, what do we think we're going to strip it down to? Like what circumstances have changed that have made whatever the lawyers thought was beneficial last time not beneficial this time?
So the old RFP had a lot of things that said, "Oh, you will operate a farm stand between eight and, between 10 and six, six days a week."
Offer your own for this many days.
You're going to have the school kids come. All of that stuff should be stripped out.
Yeah.
You're going to lease this property. So.
Yeah.
So, so anything that we want to do for changes with that, you know, then we would need the feedback of the board because at the time, those are things that were priorities. So we could strip it back, but that has to happen within the course of your regular meetings. You need to have extra meetings. And, you know, you think something's going to come out of it, you know, because that's another thing too.
Could we direct Ryan and Jim to work on getting a draft RFP together that does not address use?
So maybe Matthew and I can sit down and strip something out and then work with Ryan and Jim and town council.
I can do a red line on the existing one and send it to Jenny and we can confer on that. Because I think you and I, when we spoke to Jenny, had a pretty good sense of where we were. So you and I can, can, can submit a red line and let's see where, where that goes. That's the next step.
Great.
Can I ask a question?
Just-
Sorry. How do you get the word out about these RFPs? Show up how-
Thank you.
441000. How do you get the word out about these RFPs?
So for the RFI, we did a lot of outreach. I wish Amy was still here. We did advertising digitally. We went to a bunch of listservs, I'm doing with Farm Bureau.
Farm Finders.
I can't even remember. We, we, we spammed it everywhere.
Did you?
And I included a lot with nonprofits.
Yeah, so we, yeah, we got, we got the word out quite, quite well.
Would you like me to put it on Zillow?
On what?
Zillow.
Um, is that, do they do that?
I can.
They do RFPs?
I pay them $3,000 a month. I can, they'll do almost-
Yeah, let's, let's talk.
Let's, let's talk about this. And come on- And while I'm up here, can I say one thing very quickly? I think you guys are moving at lightning speed. I grew up in Littleton, I expect small towns to take their time, and I think you guys are moving very quickly.
Well, you're comparing us before social media.
Well, that, and I've got to admit, I'm one of the people who voted against selling the property. I don't want to lose control of it, and if we sell it, we may be able to decide what happens to it immediately, but down the road, we'll lose total control and have no say on it at all. So I don't know how you reassure me, or a lot of people I know that feel like I do, about that, because I don't think there's a way to. So there we go. But I'm happy to help with releasing it any way, shape, or form I can.
And thank you so much for this.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, too.
Hopefully it was helpful.
It was extremely helpful, so thank you.
I just follow up and point to Cherry, too, that it might be useful to ask the question to town council, because I think that is an open question of, if we do sell or rent, you know, the restrictions that you could put in, but focusing on sale particularly, we already have the APR in, so are there other things that you could put within the course of that sale that then protect, protect what other legacy aspects that you'd have done on the property? I think that's a good question that we should get more information on.
I mean, really, we investigated that at the working group and came up with deed restrictions, which are, I think, limited to 30 years, and historical restrictions, which we were working with the Historical Commission to look into either a district or an actual historical restriction on the house, which would be more permanent.
Yeah, but to that point, then, there are other things that could be put into it that would make it more restrictive to...
Yeah.
...address some of those concerns.
And we were also trying to add the barn into the APR, the barn parcel into the APR.
Yeah, all those things, yeah.
Can we move to adjourn?
Quickly?
Very quickly.
Rob Brown, 25 Juniper Road. I support pushing this out to a lease, I've spoken to some people offline, they support it, they're knowledgeable subject matter experts. Prior to the town vote, Matthew drafted an MOU that was presented to the working group. I think it stopped cold because the town vote neglected it, but was basically a memorandum of understanding between the working group and the Select Board. It addressed many issues, it came from that 410 meeting that I talked about with regard to lack of trust in the Select Board. I think it's not been stated here that, you know, part of the vote may have been because everything was being put in the hands of the Select Board. I'm not trying to throw that stone, I'm just trying to say that's what's been said in multiple meetings. I think if you move forward with, Mark, you've said, a data point on the lease, it'd be worthwhile going. Steve Anoudi strongly stated, you know, go forward with kind of like a prepackage, we put something out, we got these responses, now we're asking for your approval with regard to specifics, with regard to potentially a lessie that you could present to the public. I think that would be very, very advantageous, and to get on with it and get it done so that we're not having this six-month period between town votes resulting in nothing. Thank you.
So you and I all work on something to try and for our end of June meeting?
Yep. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Matthew, second by, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.